All right, I just will call the July 19 meeting to order. Board at our school board. Roll call please.
Carrie Hope Grant.
Here.
Leo Thomasgard.
Here.
Captain McGrath.
Here.
John Duffin.
Here.
And Tracy Luns present.
All right. President's report. Oh, consider approval of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval of agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. President's report. All the board members are in attendance. And the next board meeting is August 16. That's...I think that's all right with everyone?
Yeah, usually we do the third...
Yeah.
The third week in August or that third Wednesday, just so that in case we have any last minute hires, other things to do before that school year starts, so.
Good. All right, now administrator reports. Update on end of year budget and high school recognition. Kyle?
So, a couple of weeks ago, I was frantically calling you all and telling you we may have to do a quick board meeting to deal with some end of the year budget items. We were able to avoid that. And basically what happens is, so the district had structurally set up a deficit last year of $177,000...or I'm sorry, $175,200. And if we don't spend to what we tell the state, whether it's a deficit or not, depending on the amount that we don't spend that we told the state we're going to, we could lose aid in the following year. So, and not that we want to just haphazardly spend money just to spend it, but there were some options that we could have looked at. There is a fund that the board could establish. It's basically a building fund and we're able to transfer money into it and it's considered spent at that point. So there were some things that...there were a couple of options that we could have looked at. And certainly some needs that we could have looked at trying to just finish up on the year, but we didn't have to do that. Part of the reason for that phone call at the end is, literally into the last week of school, we're still getting bills and some of them can be very significant. And we...so we have to try to anticipate what do we have to pay out yet? What do we know we have for revenue coming in? And one of the items was our 66-03 agreements, which are the inter-agency agreements. One of them that we have with NACUSA School District for some of our special education services came in at about, I want to say it was about $30,000 less than we had anticipated. So when we'd budgeted originally, we used last year's number. They actually came in less by a significant amount, which is a good thing. So that was one of the reasons we were sitting there going, oh, boy, we may have some extra funds we need to figure out what we're going to deal with. But in terms of the overall budget picture at the end of the year, we did end up spending just over 20,000, about $21,000 over what the original deficit was. Now to put that in perspective, you'd actually authorized an additional $95,000. So of the approximately $95,000 that you had authorized in additional spending, we only spent about $21,000 of it. Those were the additional hires, Jody Waltonberg, that was the adding time onto Justin Crandall's contract, time onto Jill Wyland's contract, that was adding two aides, that was the gym floor project to finish that up above and beyond what the insurance had covered, and that was to increase some other aid time. All told, it came to about a total approved deficit spending was 270,700. We spent 196,888. So why, and then, to be honest, a very positive position for us to be in on the budget. Why the big difference? One of the reasons, open enrollment. We had a complete flip-flop in our open enrollment numbers from the previous year. That meant that we were seeing more revenue coming in than we were sending out in payments. That's the first time since I have been here as district administrator and high school principal, maybe the first time in a very long time that that has happened. So that was something we did not, you know, that was part of the reason we were hiring additional teachers is we're getting all those very late open enrollments. So that served us very well. Again, the idea of NACUSA, the bill we were spending from NACUSA was almost $30,000 less than we had budgeted for. So there were several factors that really led to a fairly positive budget position at the end of the year compared to what we thought it was really going to be. Transfers, a couple of other pieces that were positive. Normally, in a good year, we're transferring about $10,000 to food service out of the general fund. It's been as high as the mid twenties when there's been capital purchases of equipment in food service. This year, our transfer into food service was $2,900. Very small amount going into food service. Fund 27, which is special education, this shocks me. We only had to transfer $883 into Fund 27. There's a good and a bad. The good is, it was only $883. The bad side of that is, in special education, you have to have a maintenance of effort. Basically, you have to spend what you were spending unless you have an extraordinarily good reason as to why you were not. And it's based on the amount of kids you have and your previous year's spending. We're going to have to work on that. To be honest, our spending is probably going up in special education. Again, we have more kids, so it should go up in that area, but this year we may not be meeting quite the letter of the law on the maintenance of effort. There's...the spending is what it is. There's nothing right at the moment we can do about that, but just so that you know that. One item that we had to take care of, there was a Fund 21 deficit, and basically that's our grant money. And that deficit has been in that fund for a while. And what we're thinking happened is that at some point along the way in the past several years, there was grant money that came into that fund or that should have went into that fund, but went into the general fund, but it was still paid out of that fund. So there was a deficit of $15,000 in that fund, really in the grant fund, is an in-and-out fund. But again, we think what happened at some point over the last several years, there was a grant that the district received, it just got booked to the wrong place and the auditor didn't catch that and we didn't catch it. So we do, we are making a transfer into that to zero that back out so that that grant, so that grant fund is where it should be. And it's grants, special projects, things like that. But all of those, very good, good things. We are still anticipating some tax payments yet on last year. So, in a relatively good position now. You know, we've talked a little bit about the idea of, you know, is there the potential down the road that we'd have to seek a referendum? I think this is now going to probably be something that we're going to have to go back and look at and go, okay, we didn't spend an anticipated $100,000 that we thought we were going to spend, or almost $100,000. Does this change our position for another year? And it may. And that's something that Lisa, Lisa and I are going to continue to explore. Really, the big thing up in the air right now with that is the state's going on 18 days behind budget, behind due on budget. We right now do not know what those final extra aid amounts that they keep telling us we're going to get are. We don't, there's a lot of unknowns. So, you know, at the moment, in terms of getting this year's budget finalized and looking forward, we're kind of in that state of limbo at the moment. But again, very positive end of the year on our budget. So I'm very happy to report that to you. Compared, again, compared to where we thought we might be. So, the other part of my report, high school recognition. You're getting the first, now this has actually been out in the press, the general press for a while, however, it's not really, haven't made a splash about this yet, and so tonight I'm going to introduce it and we're going to get this out into the public. I make sure I'm opening this up right for you. So, John Edwards High School.
Wow.
Okay.
We are, made the U.S. News and World Report list of top high schools. We were the rated number 69 high school in the state of Wisconsin, and I believe we were in the top 15% nationwide. Within that top 15%, I think is where we fell nationwide. This is based on data in the previous last year or two. It garnered us a silver, what is considered a silver rating. I think you had to be in the top 5% to get that. Gold rating, but still, very impressive. So we have this banner, which will be going up in our gymnasium. Locally, Wisconsin Rapids made that list. I won't tell you where they were on the list, but they did make the list, because I don't really remember the exact number, but they did make that list. They're a silver rated school as well. So, but, you know, school similar size, this is quite an honor for us.
Is that something that could be displayed at the Port Fund Fest Monarch Festival?
Before we get it up on our gymnasium wall in the high school? Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be a wonderful thing to have down there.
We're going to get, we're going to get this on our website. It's going to go in the newsletter, so.
Make a little wooden two-by-four frame for it and stick it up on the side of the Monarch Building during the fundraiser.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're, we're very proud of that achievement. Like I said, I wanted to roll that out at the board meeting tonight.
Congratulations.
Show you that.
Was there a lot of paperwork to go through?
No, no. They, U.S. News and World Report goes back into the data and mines the data that they're able to access publicly and they developed their list that way.
Wow.
So, very, this is the first time that I know of that John Edwards High School has been named on that list. So, there's gold, silver, bronze are the recognition levels, and they're each a percentage of the schools that are rated. So, so very.
Definitely go on the website, definitely go on the newsletter, definitely go anywhere we can put it.
Yep.
Make cave while the sun shines.
Yes, so we're, and like I said, that's going to be, we're going to proudly post that in our gymnasium so by the time we have that first fall event in there.
A little extra shield on all the letterhead.
Yeah, the, there may have to be some, I may have to purchase the rights to U.S. News and World Report's little logo to do that, so I want to caution that we can certainly put it out there and say that we are. Once you put that shield though, there's some rights that go with that, so I have to be cautious there.
Well, I'm sure that the schools that are recognized in that fashion have bombarded the publication with requests for.
They actually have a, they have a separate arm that comes out and will contact you and get you that information. So they actually, they.
It's advertising for their magazine.
Absolutely. So they contact us, so.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. With that, just, I, I will just add to my report just a little bit, just so that you're updated. We have been in contact and have made some grounds with the engineer on the gym drainage. I'm in also contact with Complete Control because of the potential energy efficiency side of that, because there may be some, there may be a way that we can leverage energy efficiency, not with drainage, obviously, but if we need to look at roof replacement there as part of this, that roof is old enough and could probably warrant that end of it, so that might assist in that project, so to speak, or do both things at once, you're probably going to get more bang for your buck. So, the engineering firm finally got me numbers here within the last couple of days. So we're able to, I think, move forward and at least see where we can go now. And like I said, I've reached out to Complete Control as well to make sure we don't step on toes the wrong way one way or the other as we move forward on both fronts. So.
As I said, that's important that we, that we really move on that because we're one gully washer away from having another gym floor.
Yep, and we're, we did, we did.
I want to think about that.
Yeah, we've, we had an area, we did find some more leakage, but it was not drain leakage. It was sections of roof that are overlaid and a seal. So we did have a little more leakage and we've tried, we've got the roofer in there, adjusted immediately. So we're, it's a constant, got to watch it until we get this hammered out. The only kicker with the energy efficiency, again, that's a piece we're waiting on the state budget for, so.
It's almost like if there's a heavy rain forecast, we bring in, we bring in, we bring in someone and buy them some chips and coke and set them on the chair in the gym with the lights on, looking up.
Yes, brain watch. Yesterday, they were, yesterday our maintenance.
I'm only being partly facetious.
Well, yesterday our maintenance was in there after the rain yesterday. They were in there last week. I went in yesterday after the rain. So it's, and they're up on the roof checking those drains, checking those things. They've been very cognizant about that.
Cranberry growers can have frost watch, we can have rain watch until we get that silly thing fixed.
Yep. So, the drains are draining, which is a good thing.
Yep.
We just got to keep on it and come up with that permanent solution, so.
All right. Very good news. Okay, number four, questions and comments from people in attendance. They don't see anyone. More requests. So move on to consent agenda. Number five, consider approval of minutes of the past meeting, June 14. Is there a motion?
I'm so moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of financial reports.
Just on, I want to make a special note on the gifts. The Alexander Charitable Foundation donated $38,000 to the improvement of the stage lighting. That fully funds the estimate that the school district received from Main Stage Theatrical on installing not a conventional system, but an LED system of lighting. This is, this will more than add, this will meet our needs, I shouldn't say more than, it will meet our needs. Actually be, from what I was told when they came through and worked up the estimate, there actually be less lights than there currently are, but they will be much more capable, much better lighting, more controllable lighting, so, and much safer lighting. The current system that is in there is a patchwork system. So this will be a comprehensive system, it'll use less energy. It actually will take, we have to have an electrician come in and do some electrical work. It will take less electrical work because the load being put on the lighting, it will not be as great going with the LED system. So although the system is about $4,000 or $5,000 more than a conventional, where we will see the savings is, one, energy use, but number two, the electrical work will be much less extensive, so the work of an electrician. So we've contacted Main Stage and they are anticipating a September project so that this is done in time for our drama production in November. And again, the Alexander Charitable Foundation has been very generous over the past two years now with the replacement of the curtain last year for us, and now this year with the stage lighting. And we are looking, as I've worked with them on this grant money, we are certainly looking forward to in 2020, the 100th anniversary and doing a celebration and partnering with that foundation however we can to make sure that we celebrate that facility, so.
We are so fortunate.
Yep.
Awesome.
That's great.
All right, with that, seek a motion to approve the financial report, say it through G.
I'm moved.
Your motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carried. There is no unfinished business tonight, so we move on to new business. Number seven, consider approval of food service policy.
So, this policy is actually, we're going to add this to our policy book now. It's written in the Neola style because we worked with Neola. This was a policy that school districts need to adopt as soon as possible. So it's got to be on the books here this July. So this is going to be a one approval and done. This covers our food service, but what's, what the changes and why this is necessary to do now is USDA requires as of July 1 that food service providers, so we're a food service provider in a school district, I'd say school district food service providers that receive federal funds, adopt policy that directly deals with collection of delinquent payments and how school districts are going to deal with students who are behind in making payment for food service. Basically, the, the thought process of the federal government is, the federal government does not want to be in the business of funding school lunches that are not free or reduced school lunches. So the school district, thing is, we're there, we have to make sure that we're not using food service funds to basically backfill delinquent accounts. It's the easiest way to say that. We are, actually Stacy works directly with the food service collection of monies from students. You know, we've had accounts this past year that have been significantly negative, but we've, but that's probably more the exception than the rule. The average student isn't running hundreds of dollars negative. We may, the average is probably running, if there's an average of those who run negative, because to be honest, the vast majority are positive, always positive, but of those that are in the negative, maybe $6. Might be a good average there. So it's not, not a significant amount of money. But we have to have a policy on how we're going to notice the students, how we're going to collect, we have to have policy on, well, what happens when they go delinquent? Are we going to continue to give them lunch? How long are we going to give them lunch? So basically, this policy at least sets into motion those procedures for us and allows us to begin to develop those so that we have it spelled out so we can inform the parents. So with that, I ask you to accept this food service policy. So this would actually be the first full policy you would adopt out of the Neola system.
It still allows us to send emails and.
Oh, yes, yep. In fact, we, we still need to do that. And there is a couple of things that'll happen. The new student information system is much more robust in its ability to get notifications out to parents. The other thing is, the new student information system has an online payment feature. So for food service, we'll be able to collect online, do have online payments. So, and with multiple, with multiple students, you can direct where you want that, how you want that broken down. My daughter, for instance, if I put $50 in my daughter's account, on the last day of school, there still might be $49 in my daughter's account. My son's account, I'm constantly putting money in it, so.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve food service policy. And a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Number eight, consider approval of employee handbook change, compensation co-curricular contracted duties.
So the, so what we were looking at was adding, adding two positions. One was Skills USA Advisor and the other was Ecology Club Advisor. Those have both been, Ecology Club has been in the district for many years. Skills USA has a direct tie into technology education and is a competitive program that students can enter. And it, but it is also a club and a co-curricular group. They have officers, they elect, they have conferences, leadership conferences and things that they attend. So those would be two new additions. Additionally, we would like to split Middle School Student Council and Middle School Yearbook into two separate positions. We're not saying that the same person can't hold those positions, but we don't want to tie those two necessarily directly together, so that it's got to be just one person. So along with that, an additional change that I'd like to see made is an increase in the school-to-work coordinator compensation. So the way that position works is, our school-to-work coordinator is a teacher. When that teacher does not have a full teaching load, one hour a day is dedicated and paid as school-to-work coordinator, but there's no extra pay, it's just part of their teaching contract at that point. However, when that teacher has a full teaching load, then that's beyond their full teaching load and they spend considerable amount of time, especially with many changes over the last couple of years in additional grants that the state has made available to us, getting students out into apprenticeships. We've got now, I believe, whereas two years ago, we had one student in an apprenticeship, we now have, I believe we're potentially going to have four students out in student apprenticeships this fall. One is in-house through our tech department, the other three will be out in the community. And those are all, the school-to-work coordinator fills out state paperwork on that, monitors those students, they monitor other students in the school-to-work. So compared to what it was 10 years ago, five years ago, this position has evolved. In fact, this is now a revenue generating position for us. This has brought us some significant grants and yearly brings us grant money. So I ask for that, at least recognition of, this is much bigger than what we were compensating at when they do it outside of that contract.
Yeah, I think that's a very important position.
Yeah.
I agree with the increase.
Yeah, so, and I guess with that, I would ask your adoption of this. We're probably going to bring you more handbook changes in August, but this one at least allows us to move forward and get some positions posted now.
All of these positions are not skills.
Not, no, not, not all of them are. Now Skills USA and Ecology Club, we already have advisors in those, so we'll just roll that over to those advisors, so.
All right, entertain a motion to approve employee handbook change.
I'm moved.
Motion by Leo, seconded by Tracy. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion's carried. Number nine, consider approval of the declaration and parent notice of district's student academic standards.
Each year, we have to give public notices, many of them by law. However, only one of them requires board action at the first meeting in July. It is the notice on academic standards. And basically, you're just reaffirming the standards that we have used for the past several years in the areas of math, writing, reading, science, geography, and history. Very specific as to what you're approving there. So it's basically approving that notice that we post out to parents.
Essentially, those standards are not necessarily mandated, but pretty close to mandate it.
Yes. I mean, they are. I mean, we're using the standards that the state has continuously used.
Right, I mean, there's some, there's some variance there, but you're, you're tough to meet the requirements without taking that.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, we're using the standards that are going to tie right into the state testing, the ACT, the, we're using those standards in our classrooms.
I mean, because I know there are some, you know, complaints from parents about some of those changes that have happened with the core.
Yep.
And the.
But even within that, we've, we've tried to do it our way.
As I say, there's been some adjustments, which I think are very good, I guess.
Yep.
And it's just, just to bring a little discussion to that, that.
Yep, absolutely.
That, because I think a lot of parents think that this is totally our choice or totally school's choice, where it's, it's not 100% mandated from what I can understand and read about it, but it essentially is because you're, you're going to be hard-pressed to meet the requirements unless you adopt.
Yes. I mean, if we were to try to go out and develop a completely, our own set of reading standards that.
Right.
Met what the goals and state, what, what all the goals and pieces that are aligned to all the state testing and other pieces, we would be putting in months of work validating that.
And I do see that, I think that from, from my kids, you know, obviously not the older ones that I've gone through, but getting, there's, there's been some adjustments that have been a little bit better, but still some things I don't necessarily always agree with, but.
And I think our teaching staff has been, has tried to be cognizant about making sure that we're meeting these standards in ways that make sense for our district. that we're meeting these standards in ways that make sense for our district. You know, and that, you know, and that's probably been the key.
I guess just to get a comment out there that, yeah, we're.
Oh, I, I understand, yeah.
That, that's pretty much all I wanted to just bring up, just a little note in regards to that, that we're not just blindly following, but kind of almost active.
Yeah, there was definitely, even within, and just kind of comments on, on that and how we did some of that in terms of English, uh, language arts. There's a way that the Common Core would have it done and prescribed somewhat, some of the things that are pre-prescribed. And we looked at that and went, it's not exactly fitting in how we've got our curriculum developed and we just don't want to throw the, that baby out with the bathwater. So we, we made it fit for what we were doing. And, and that's, you know, that, that's completely okay.
Again, just to, you know, get some comment on that so that people maybe will realize that's not all this district's choice.
If you go to the DPI website, that, maybe look through some of the standards, they're pretty extensive.
Oh, yes.
And, uh, yeah, cover a lot of, a lot of area.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was going through quite a bit of it and, uh, you know, just to learn a little bit more and see what, uh, what choices we do have, which are somewhat limited.
Yep.
So.
Okay. Did we get, no, we haven't had a motion yet, have we? Entertain a motion to approve the parent notice and declaration of academic standards.
Second.
Motion by Tracy, seconded by Carrie. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Number 10, consider approval of rewrite of the Port Edward School District promissory notes.
So what I sent you in the board packet is not accurate any longer because I've been on the phone a dozen times in the last two days with NACUS support Edward State Bank. It's still all good news, but I have new, I have new amortization charts. So, um, the, so we have two loans. The larger of the two loans, which when it was last rewritten, started out with a balance of $529,000. That loan at that time that it was rewritten, just a few years ago, in fact, in 2015, that loan at that time was at 4.75% interest. We are going to a new note at 3.5% interest, so saving one and a quarter. The smaller of the two loans was $350,000 when that was last rewritten. That was at 4.5%, we are going to 3.0%. So we're gaining a point and a half on that one.
First note was how much?
Five, 533,260. Now, what sparked our interest in this, besides the fact that we can get much better interest rates, what really sparked our interest and why we started down the path of rewrite was in meeting with Baird Financial earlier this spring, Baird was quick to point out that we have coming due on May 15 of 2025, a balloon payment on the larger of the two loans, so $339,748. In that fiscal year, actually, we would be paying $371,000 to that loan because that was a quarterly paid loan. Again, with that big $339,000 balloon payment. So when we have been budgeting relatively stable budget of $86,000 every year, and then actually what would happen is the smaller loan quits in 2021, so we pay that off in 2021. So then we go down to $40,000 a year in payments. To suddenly have that $339,000 shot of a payment would just blow the budget out of the water that year. We can only extend these loans at maximum to, the loans can be taken for a maximum of 20 years. So that restricts us, but on the rewrite, we are extending that larger loan out longer. And the other piece that we are doing is, as soon as the smaller loan falls off in 2021, we're keeping the payments stable at that, at that larger amount. Rather than, rather than let that payment drop $40,000, we're just going to keep that stable payment moving. So we're able to pay this loan off. We're going to take it out about another year, but we're going to save on the interest over the life of that and we're going to eliminate a large balloon. Now, I do have new amortization schedules from what I originally sent you. The smaller one stays the same. And this, I'm first going to hand you the smaller one at the new interest rate. So this loan, nothing changed on the amortization that you might have gotten other than maybe the dates of when the payments are. But once this loan is said and done, we'll have saved $8,244 in interest. So, you know, that's, you know, over the course of life of the loan, that's a significant amount, you know. But again, that loan, we're going to make a payment here this month and then we have four more payments after that, and that loan will be done. So that loan, I believe, went to fund originally, almost 20 years ago, that went to fund some building projects or something along those lines, when it was originally taken out almost 20 years ago. The second loan, we had to do some playing on this one because, and this is the one where the amortization table changed from what I sent you, because Baird had taken into account that we were paying this yet this year, but when the bank looked at it, they weren't taking that into account quite right. And so we've had to rewrite this one about five times to make it all work. So what's going to happen with this loan? We'll continue to pay this year on our quarterly payments. Next year, we'll actually have a bit of relief on the loan. The loan will actually, uh, will pay about $3,000 less than we normally are on our loans next year. But then after that, the loan will rise in payment for three years by $3,000 a year. So 18, 19, we'll end up paying total between the two loans, $83,230. And then in 19, 20, it'll be $86,230, and then in 2021, it'll be $89,230. And then it will stabilize, after 21, 22, it'll stabilize at $93,558. That is much more palatable than $339,000, all coming due on one day. So they had to, had to do a bit of rewrite on that, like I said, from what I had originally sent you on the amortization, but it spreads it out, gives it a little bit longer life. We are paying a grand total of $47,247,216 less on that loan over the course of its life by this refinance. So almost $50,000 less on this loan over the course of its life. A grand total between the two loans, we will be saving $55,460 over the course of their lives. So, um, this, again, trying not to kick the can down the road, this stabilizes this loan for the most part. Again, we're going to, we are going to bear a little bit of pain over the course of this and the fact that each year we're going to have to pay just a little more. But what we do is we save a whole lot of interest and we avoid a balloon payment. So I would ask that you approve the rewrite. And I do have paperwork on the smaller loan that can be signed tonight. I will have to contact you on the paperwork on the larger loan. And then we will also send that off to Ruder Ware for some final signatures because Ruder Ware, our attorney, will have to sign off on that as well. But I would ask that you approve that.
This was the, the arrangement that you developed in lieu of seeking another lender.
This, yeah, and the other lender was the State Trust Fund, which they were very willing to do it. NACUS support Edward State Bank, who we hold our school district accounts with and who currently hold the notes, was very willing to discuss matching as close as they could what the State Trust Fund did, and they essentially, they matched it. They matched the dollar, they matched the interest rates exactly, so.
I think that, that speaks, that speaks well, that speaks well of our local financial institution and it's always nice to be able to keep business local if you can do it.
Yep, and they were very willing to work with us on that. And again, it was very helpful, some of our meetings with Baird and looking at budget projections. This is one of the things that Baird pulled out and said, yeah, take care of this because this will help you, this, it's not going to help your budget in the next couple of years. What it'll do is it's going to help your budget several years out when you're suddenly going to be faced with a balloon payment you can't afford, so.
Kudos to NACUS support Edwards for being able to work with us.
Yep, yep. So.
Right, entertain a motion to approve the rewrite of the school district promissory notes.
I'll move.
Which I'm by Kathy, seconded by Leo. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Opportunity for individual board member comment. Kathy?
Oh, gosh, I have a lot of things. We were just, Leo and John were there Monday night at the Kids from Wisconsin performance and our very own Megan Shields, what an awesome job she did as a sophomore in high school. I mean, she's got a great career ahead of her, so that was just really fun to be there and watch her. I just wanted to mention how good the gardens at both of the schools, both the elementary school and the high school, look this year. I've been by numerous times and they are really being well taken care of. So kudos to the people that are doing that. I know that the Black Hawk scramble was one of the best ones they've ever had this year with the most participants and, gosh, we're so thankful for them and all that they do for the school district. And I just wanted to say something about Steve Burno. I don't know if you've noticed what's going on downtown Port Edwards by the bank, but there's a little building going up and it is a monarch habitat. Steve Burno has been working on it and hopefully we're going to have live monarchs in there and caterpillars and the whole life cycle and.
How do you invite them, invite them in?
Um, well, I'm raising them. We released over 25 today, so hopefully we'll just put them in there and then we're going to put potted milkweed and things in there so that they can actually carry on their life cycle in there. I've never done this, so this is a whole experiment, but hopefully it's going to work and be something positive for Port Edwards. And I just want to remind everyone about the Port Fun Fest, August 12th, well, actually 11th and 12th, it starts on Friday night with an ice cream social and car cruise. But on Saturday, down at the park near the YMCA, Alexander Park, there will be the Port Edwards Fun Fest and Monarch Festival, the first annual. So I hope everyone will attend that. Thank you.
Same, same comment I made last month, our, our state budget process continues to wind. A big part of that is the funding that the state provides for our public schools. I would encourage people to continue to monitor this and to hold our legislators' feet to the fire in terms of making sure that public schools receive a, a fair shake in, in the ongoing budget process. The longer this drags out, the more unsure our budgeting process for fall is and the more harried our staffs become. So let's hope that the powers that be can manage to make this come together in a timely fashion and that it gets, it gets signed soon.
Carrie.
Again, as Kathy spoke about, the Fun Fest on the 11th and 12th, 13th year that they've put this little thing together. I think the second year that I moved to Port Edwards is when it first started. And it's grown from probably about maybe, I don't know, 25 to 50 cars in that first year and two. And, and I think it actually, they, they lost the car show maybe one, one or two years and then they were able to bring it back. And the last few years, it's been just a really large event, really nice to see in this, this community. So bring a little bit of non-perishables and that's all you've got to do to get in there. Enjoy some music, good food from the Lions. Yeah, I think you get to dunk a cop once in a while. I think they do, they do that pretty much every year, right Kathy?
Yeah.
So it's, it's a good time, take your kids down there.
Fun. I just want to say how exciting that was to see how Port Edwards rated in the US News and World Report. It just kind of reiterates, I think, what we're always saying about Port Edward School District and just the way our kids are prepared when they leave here. Another thing, I just want to continue to encourage, like, community members and the teachers that like will approach any of us with any concerns they have in the school. I think it helps to make our school a success.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment about the Kids from Wisconsin too. I was in attendance and it was an excellent show and proud of that we had a Port Edwards student in there and they were all so talented. And also, I want to mention that last month, I was able to give a tour to, I had a class reunion, so I was able to give a tour to my fellow alumni of the high school and they were all impressed with how it was still in very, very good shape. And they were all, you know, proud like I am to be a graduate of Jenner's High School. It was a well, well-regarded tour and they were all so happy to get back into high school. So that's all I have. So next thing is establish future board meetings, Wednesday, August 16th and Wednesday, September 13th.
And I believe we may have a request from the Port Edwards Education Association to do their negotiations probably in August, so.
Do you want to set October for a wait?
In October, we normally also do our annual meeting, that's already established, so, and.
It's a moving budget.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to do the annual meeting, whether the state has a budget or not. So, um, it's looking like.
Who's the third?
There's the date there.
Wednesday.
Should be October 11?
October 11 sounds good.
That's the second, so.
That's already set. It's either going to be the 30th or the 23rd.
One of those two days.
30th of October.
Or the 23rd, but I think it's the 30th.
30th.
I want to say it's the 30th. That one, that one's set the previous year.